I’m going to call tonight’s meeting to order. Oh, I’m looking at the wrong agenda. Sorry.
Look, I got next.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matt Tomoto Wright.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the City Manager’s Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and members of council. Just a few things to mention tonight. National Night Out Tuesday night was fantastic. We had a great time and a great turnout, and we had 34 vendors, which is nine more than we had last year. So, we’re continuing to expand our events, and we’re excited about that. Another interesting stat is that we went through 1,000 hot dogs, which is great.
We what?
Went through 1,000 hot dogs.
Thousand?
Thousand hot dogs. So, hopefully not all the same person. Joey Chestnuts nowhere near us. So, next piece I wanted to mention, the Evergreen Playfield. Now that National Night Out is over, work has started today, and as you know, we’re retrofitting all the lights. We plan to do one poll per day, and there’s a schedule we should be done, I believe, by 8:16, but Jeff Betts is online to correct me if I’m wrong on that date. Also, Veterans Park construction is going to start here in the next couple of weeks. So, we’re excited about that. Last thing, partially because Jeff’s here, but I would mention it anyway, is today is Mr. Betts’ 19th anniversary with the City of Mount Lake Terrace. So, congratulations to him.
Yay!
And that’s all I have for you this evening. I’m happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager, and happy anniversary, Jeff. Did have a quick question. So, with the construction at Veterans Park, as far as kind of public access, can you just remind us what that looks like for people that want to access the park, or what limits there will be?
Yeah, so, we will have signs out, of course, and the construction fencing that you see, the orange fencing. There will be some limitations of access, but it’s not going to be continuous or regular, I don’t believe. And Jeff, if you would like to chime in here, that would be great.
I’m sorry, I couldn’t hear the entire question. Could you repeat that?
Oh, what the construction restrictions, if any, look like during Veterans Park trail construction?
Yeah, we’re going to definitely restrict access to the park itself. The upper area will be available for the public to utilize.
Yep. Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Sonmore.
It’s just comments on National Night Out. Councilmember Wall and I talked to the two women that were manning the booth for Waste Management, and we asked about the extra charges. So, we picked up the paperwork, and they weren’t sure, but it says garbage cans are based on cart size. There is a charge for extra garbage that doesn’t fit into your cart with the lid closed. If your garbage lid is open, there will be an extra charge. And so, I know a lot of people are concerned, so we’re hoping that Waste Management will come in and maybe do a presentation. They just sent out a survey, and we wanted to get those facts back, because I’m not sure how many people filled it out, but it’s really important for us to know about what we can put in the recycle and what we can put in our garbage can, because we were told that they would start charging us if we put in the wrong recycled...I was trying to think of what they were called.
Wrong items in the recycle.
Egg crates, those plastic things. What are those?
Clam shells.
Clam shells, that’s it. Because I never...do I throw it away? Do I not? And so, I’ve been kind of trying to study this so I can remember myself. And then, they’re also having a large recycling event. You should have gotten a postcard in the mail about paints and different things, and I know people are always asking about that. So, that’s stuff you cannot put in your recycle. But they told us that they would be taking pictures of things that were in our recycle and would charge us $25, but there would be a couple times where you wouldn’t get charged, you’d just get a warning, but after that, it would be like $25. And I think mine was $14 extra, or $8 extra, because my lid wasn’t all the way closed. If I would have smashed it, I could have gotten it closed, but I know a lot of people are concerned about that. And I know the way that we’re doing garbage is changing, because a lot of countries are not accepting our garbage, so I know there’s a lot of changes to come. So, I just want to make sure that we’re aware and keep our citizens aware of that. And then, the last little comment I had was, I felt sorry for the library. They had this big, huge table and a smaller table, and it was a great place that moms could have brought their dads, or grandmothers, or whoever were overseeing the children to come and color, and nobody was there. And so, I was hoping maybe next time, we could put them out in the center and make sure everybody got noticed. But I noticed a lot of the vendors were there. They were wonderful. They were great to talk to, and it was fun going around to each booth. So, thank you for putting that together. And can I ask who paid for the hot dogs? Because when we started this in 1997, we got them all donated, our former chief’s wife. We went out and begged for buns and hot dogs and different things, and we used to have the day-old bakery, so we have a...is that donated?
Yes.
Those $1,000? Who’s donated?
Thousand hot dogs.
What did I say?
Thousand dollars.
Oh.
I don’t know for sure, so I don’t want to misspoke...misspeak, but I will find out.
Oh, thank you.
And we will schedule a presentation for you, or reach out to Waste Management and get one scheduled.
Yeah, I brought my brother this time, and he was very impressed, so good job, well done.
Okay, Councilmember Woodard? Did you have your hand up?
I think that was...
I did not.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought it...okay.
Jeff, did you have something you’d like to add?
Yeah, sure. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to chime in that I believe that Double D gives them to us at cost.
And I think Double D provided a lot of volunteer hours as well, so their staff were generous there on a number front.
So, quite a few donated items, the buns, the hot dogs, the chips, the water, a lot of things.
Yeah.
So, probably should give a shout out to everybody. And I know we do. We have the signs and everything, and we probably put it into our city happenings when we write about it, but you can’t, you know, can’t overdo it. Let’s keep doing it.
Yep.
You can always thank them more than once.
You can’t overdo a hot dog.
Oh, the one thing I...can I just say one more thing about...so, when we started National Night Out, of course, in 1997, the big thing was to take a bite out of crime, and that’s kind of how...and so, one of the things I want to make sure that we do is telling people how to take a bite out of crime and making sure that the police officers are there giving tours that are wonderful, but also telling people how to stay safe, you know, how to lock your window. You know, we used to have cards in the windows that were safe homes that, when we were little kids, we could run to if we needed to, but really promoting that safety factor. I know we’ve got all the fun stuff, but really looking at...our goal is to keep our citizens safe. So, National Night Out is, you know, based on that, and the hot dogs and everything are wonderful, but, you know, we were talking about safety, and Erin, you left an impression on me last meeting, and so, I just kind of always want to bring that to the forefront and kind of follow up to what you had said last time.
I found a video clip from National Night Out from about 15 years ago with someone singing a song. Rick Ryan, were you singing...you were singing...you were singing Wayne’s Chester Cathedral?
No.
No, you were singing something. Oh, Secret Agent Man?
Secret Agent Man. There you go. That’s appropriate.
I didn’t reshare it.
It was Molly Pauli.
Oh, it could have been that, too.
Can you...
That was our entertainment back then.
Could you send that to me?
Oh, yeah.
We should have a lot of that stuff.
That’s some leverage. Call that.
And then, there’s another one of our former clerk of Virginia doing her zumba at a National Night Out. So, anyways, it’s nice to see these memories come back on your feed, social media feed. The one thing about the Waste Management, I just would like to just add that I cannot believe how many people on social media, on the Mount Lake Terrace site, Mount Lake Terrace Facebook site, got fined. Everybody, every other person says, “Yeah, I got fined. I got fined. I paid $10. I paid $5.” I was so amazed. So, we got to get the word out that there are rules, and they changed, because even I didn’t know about it. All right, we can go on to the next. And that is the presentation on middle housing code update overview with Jonathan Morales.
Good evening, Mayor Tomoto Wright, Mayor Protem Wall, members of council. My name is Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner, City of Mount Lake Terrace, and today, we are here to provide an introduction to our middle housing ordinance update as required by House Bill 1110. Sort of wanted to set the framework for this work that we’re doing here. As you know, we are working on our draft periodic comprehensive plan update, which sets the foundation for development code updates through policy and implementation measures. We’re also concurrently working on the draft environmental impact statement, which has a set of alternatives that we’ve previously presented, which sort of proposes different land use alternatives, which assumes densities for middle housing. So, we’ve...are planning for densities for duplexes. We have three- to four-story middle housing, mixed-use development, and we’ve previously presented that. And just to note that we did publish that draft EIS on August 1st, and there’s a...we’re in the middle of the comment period right now, 30-day comment period. So, members of the public and agencies are welcome to provide comment, and we’ll be having a public meeting here in council chambers on Monday, August 12th, from 4:30 to 6:30, where we hope public will show up and provide comment and learn more about the draft EIS process and the alternatives. So, I’m going to pass it to Ben Han of Burke Consulting, who’s been working with us on this middle housing code update work.
Thanks, Jonathan. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Han. I am a Senior Associate with a firm called Burke Consulting. If you haven’t heard of the firm before, we are a public policy and city planning firm based out of Seattle, Washington, working all over Washington State on various policy and planning questions with jurisdictions and private organizations. And so, really happy to be here today. As Jonathan mentioned, my hope here is to provide an overview of the work that we’ve been doing with city staff on drafting a middle housing ordinance and present some of our initial findings, and talk about some of the core topics that goes into a middle housing ordinance for your consideration. Next slide, please. So, our agenda today is providing a bit more information on the project background. What on earth is middle housing? How does it relate to Molly Curse? I find with these projects, the challenge is always, how do we translate state legislation into local policy and decision-making with a schedule of considerations for you all? I’ll be going over again the ordinance, what’s in the ordinance today, and leave time at the end for questions and discussion. So, yeah, prior project background. So, middle housing is called middle housing because it’s looking at housing that essentially falls between single-family homes and larger current buildings. Oftentimes, housing planning over the last few decades hasn’t really focused on homes and apartments, but we don’t talk enough about duplexes, townhomes, or other types of typologies that fit under this category. And so, compared to a single-family house, they tend to be a little bit smaller or a midsize unit. They do have a higher density than a single-family house, but they’re really meant to design to have a neighborhood scale, meaning that’s meant to fit within the existing framework of suburban streets today, and they’re typically less expensive to build compared to a per-unit basis. My favorite fun fact about middle housing is that this is often...I often call it as pre-World War II housing, but this is housing that existed before the great suburbanization movement in the U.S. in 1950s and 60s. Next slide, please. With regards to the benefits of middle housing and why middle housing is such a hot topic today, Commerce identified a few key considerations within our approach with this ordinance work. And so, first is recognizing, again, with anyone who’s a policy or a city nerd like I am, really understanding that the suburbs were created through a history of, quite frankly, racial and systemic racism discrimination. So, thinking about redlining, thinking about who had access to home loans, really just thinking about the future of neighborhoods during the mid-20th century. And so, part of this effort is understanding that it’s important to do a deeper analysis of what are the impacts of housing policy from that time period today, and how can middle housing be both a means of providing accessible, affordable housing options within a city, but also think through around understanding that as communities get more diverse and household sizes are different sizes in the city, that there’s an option for everyone who wants to live within the city, within Molly Curse. To the second point, again, it’s just providing options. As I mentioned, that we are oftentimes in different stages of our life. Often, when I speak with people about middle housing, they always think about their kids and whether they’re...if they can afford to buy a house in the city that they grew up in, and oftentimes, the answer was no. I myself was on food stamps after college for a couple of years.
Excuse me, I’m sorry to interrupt. Could you speak into your mic, because it’s really hard to hear back here.
Yeah, I can speak louder, yeah.
And everybody.
All right. Is this better?
Yeah.
All right. Now with more gusto as well. Essentially, what I’m trying to say is that we want to make sure that there’s enough housing for everyone regardless of where they are in their lives, whether if you’re married with kids, or whether if you’re living with your children and grandchildren, making sure there’s a home available for you. A big topic this year, as you all know, through the comprehensive plan update, is on climate change, and so, we want to make sure that we’re able...thinking about affordable housing, not just as a housing solution, but as a solution to climate change as well, to ensure that you are able to afford where you live, to be close to work, to close to the places that are meaningful to you and your communities. Second, my second last point is thinking about how we’re thinking about how land use and that we’re able to utilize, build out where we can within the city, and also, again, with the light rail station coming aboard, it’s a really exciting opportunity in thinking about what does this mean for the future of the city, and how do you sort of complement such a strong regional transportation system with housing to match that? And lastly, we’re required to do this, through Growth Management, through the Growth Management Act, and through legislative requirements through HB 1110.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So, when you’re thinking about that, too, you haven’t mentioned at what sacrifice or what really the Growth Management acts, because it was supposed to be there to protect our neighborhoods, and then, we don’t have a choice about this. It’s being mandated to us by the state. And what CIPA have they done? The state. And so, those are the kind of the questions, because some of this, I feel like it’s being thrown onto us, “You haven’t done this. You haven’t done that.” Well, I wasn’t there when most of these things were happening. I was a child, and now, we’re looking at it, and we’re blaming the past on everything, but we’re saying everything...everybody has to have a house and different things, but at what sacrifice are we looking at? Because I have some different scenarios that I’d like to talk about, but I’m hoping you touch upon that as well.
I would like to respond...maybe we can go through the presentation to see if that helps provide some clarity, and then, we can talk through some of the more...if not that...if that does not answer your question, I’m happy to talk more about your specific concerns around the...around like what sacrifices you’re having in mind or that understanding. And so, perhaps I can go through it.
And then, yeah, my last question may be keeping back, and who benefits the most? Who makes the most off of this?
Yeah. Let me make a note of that. Okay. Can I get the next slide, please, Jonathan? And so, again, one of the points I made earlier is that middle housing is really designed to fit within the existing context of single-family neighborhoods today. Really, what this slide, the point I always like to make is that this is not about eliminating single-family housing development within any jurisdiction. It’s about the opportunity that if you have a parcel, if you have a parcel or a lot that you own, that you have the opportunity to either build a single-family detached unit, or you have the option of building a middle housing typology on your lot as well. I’ll be going more into more of the nuances of the dimensional standards and lot typologies, but just acknowledging that really, it’s meant to fit in within the existing framework and the existing urban design of a neighborhood, for example, but also acknowledging the opportunities that are present on typical suburban lot, such as acknowledging the potential of corner lots to have more units, to have larger housing typologies, but also recognizing that you can have like an ADU in the back, or thinking about duplexes having the same sort of setbacks as a current single-family house today. Next slide, please. Again, the premise of why what’s driving all this is HB 1110, and so, really, it has identified 77 jurisdictions within the state to adopt a middle housing ordinance, and really, the crux of sort of this ordinance is centered around the idea of a unit density, meaning counting the number of units per lot rather than units per acre or by a factor that normalizes the count on the property. And so, we’ll be exploring that further today. As mentioned, this grant...this work has been funded through Grant from Commerce. We’ve submitted an initial draft of ordinance earlier in June, but nothing has been finalized or set in stone, and really, where we are in our process is to collect feedback and share information on what we’re doing. And that’s a core component of this work, building off of what’s been done already through the City of Molly Curse’s comp plan update, reviewing the work that’s been done by that consultant team with their racially disparate impacts analysis, which, again, understands how households and families are impacted by housing today, and using that as a premise to establish some anti-displacement policies as well, so that those who have lived in Molly Curse for decades are able to continue to do so, and that their kids can choose to continue to live here if they want to as well. Next slide, please. I always say, all roads, all train stations, all bike paths, and all sidewalks lead back to the comp plan. And so, in thinking about how the ordinance fits in with the bigger picture of what’s been happening for cities comprehensive updates, just acknowledging that middle housing play a critical role, meaning the housing targets for whatever alternative path the City of Molly Curse chooses to move forward with. Next slide, I’m going to breeze through these, and again, recognizing that by 2044, it’s been identified that the city has...will have a deficit of around 1,815 housing units, or 1,815 units. And then, lastly, with the next slide, breaking down how that 1,800 number fits, recognizing that there’s a deficient...a deficit of around 924 moderate-density units within a City of Molly Curse, and so, middle housing can play a critical role in helping meet that deficit and provide enough housing at that level. Next slide, please. In terms of what is considered middle housing, there are nine typologies identified from Department of Commerce, and so, I just want to quickly just kind of show when I say these units, this is sort of the picture of what comes to mind, and so, they range from duplexes to sixplexes, so from two, three, four, five, or six, relatively self-explanatory. As a city, we are required to have a minimum of two units per lot for middle housing. On top of those typologies, there’s...we’re also looking at courtyard apartments. Courtyard apartments, which are more...I like to say, like, there are housing units that have a common open space that’s shared by the tenants of that housing development. In a similar fashion, cottage housing, alternate category as well. Also, looking at townhomes, which are essentially defined by Commerce as triplexes or higher, and then stacked flats, which looks at a structure where each floor is a single unit, almost like a small condo building, if you will, but architecturally and from a design perspective, they carry the same height and dimensions as a single-family house. As it relates to other bills as well, I’m sure House Bill 1220 looks at the need for jurisdictions to plan for different affordability levels. Middle housing is typically seen as housing well-suited for households with a moderate AMI or less. House Bill 1337 provides more guidance on ADU development within jurisdictions. ADUs are not considered a middle housing typology, however, we recognize that through this ordinance as well, too, it’s important to think about what role do ADUs play in thinking about housing capacity, but also whether it counts towards the unit density of a lot. And lastly, House Bill 2321 has provided additional updates to the middle housing bill on guidance. I’ll be the first to say the guidance is being updated on an ongoing basis, and so, we’re learning and updating our work as very frequently as more information comes out. So, I’m just acknowledge how that all connects together. Next slide, please. With our project schedule, we have started this work with our feet running. And so, we started this project in April of this year. We have submitted a draft ordinance to Commerce by June 15th to meet the guidelines of the grant. Currently, we are in a process of reviewing and editing the ordinance, and as we reach towards an amended draft, we are hoping to adopt this ordinance through 2025. And so, currently, we do have an initial set of recommendations. However, nothing has been finalized yet, and continue to look forward to your feedback and discussion to help guide what goes into this document. Next slide, please. I’m going to pause here and check to see if there are any clarifying questions on middle housing itself, otherwise, I’m happy to jump right into the ordinance. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Ben, Jonathan. Quick question, I think you got at, and you can even ask me to...you can answer this question if it’s deeper in the presentation here, but I’m really interested in the types of middle housing that we might expect and how we might, you know, dial in on those where there are, you know, opportunities for folks to capitalize on home ownership versus renting, and where, if you can identify, you know, the typologies and the ways we might encourage those. I think that’s something I’m really interested in. And then, you know, I can’t overstate the...my personal interest and the community’s interest in understanding sort of how we avoid displacement, because we talk about affordability, we talk about, you know, housing accessibility. I think a lot of folks here in town and around the region view our fair city as one that is relatively affordable in the big regional context, so it’s a real topic that I think, you know, I’d like to suss out a bit more as we do this process this year. So, those are my thoughts and questions, and feel free to answer them as we go if that’s helpful.
Yeah, I do have a slide. I’ll answer your first question, but I’ll say typically, I’ll dive into the next slide, but Molly Curse is considered a Tier III city, meaning has a population less than 25,000 people, so there is no minimum that the city has to adopt. However, once...for cities that have a population of 25,000 or higher, there’s a requirement that city has to adopt a minimum of six of the nine typologies that I have identified. And the affordability question is definitely one...an ongoing conversation that requires more than just the typologies themselves, but what are sort of the costs associated with developing middle housing? And so, we’ll be talking a bit about that as well, too, with some of the actual sites.
Okay, go ahead.
And I liked your question about apartment units and dwelling, because we’re seeing our city change in a way that has unintended consequences, as all of this does, but do you have an actual metric of how many people we have now, how many people that we are projecting in the next year, and how many in the development area that we have? Because I’d like to have that at every meeting so we can say, because it says we’re 1,815 units short, and I have a feeling by 2044, we’re going to be way over that. And all these house bills, can you tell me...we can’t go below it, right? We can only go... We we can only go above it like Seattle's doing. So it's all pre-dictated to us. And so that's why I'm having some issues of, you know, what choices does the city actually have? Because we're being told by the state what we have to do. And even in our com plan, and one of the things that the com plan never quite ever gets to is those unintended consequences. And so that's one of the things that I'd like to talk about because one of the examples I wanted to share, if we have two $500,000 Molli Terrace homes and a builder comes and he puts eight homes on that. So currently, we'd have four cars, 12 trash can, three each, and two to six kids. And if we build eight non-affordable or not really affordable, because they'll be $700,000 to $900,000, maybe that's affordable to some people, but to me, that's a lot of money, considering we have a huge population turning 65 this year. If we put eight houses and we sell them, the builders sell them for seven to 900,000, that's eight homes on two lots, that's up to 32 cars, 10 to 20 kids, that'd be 24 waste cans and impact to water, have we even know what we can even afford the water pressure on eight new homes and on two lots? And so our neighborhood has changed forever, so it's not what we currently see now or what people expect. And I know there's different generations because you were just talking about it and the racially impact of it. I think also what should have been talked about is a lot of the seniors coming up because that's a horrible situation to be in when you have to pay $10,000 a month just to stay alive. And so my top question is, do we have the metrics to support what we have right now and how many apartments that are coming in in the next year? Because it looks like we have, if I did my math, about 1,500 apartments coming in in the next two years.
So on this slide that I have here, we have pending units. So that is, right now, what we have online is 1,850 units. That's either units that have been built currently permitted or under construction since the year 2020. This 7,683 number comes from Snoomish County Housing Options Report. This is the HO5 report that establishes the baseline year for housing units. So that's 2020. Pending units since 2020 are counted towards the city's 2024, 2044 housing targets. So that's how we get the 34,700, sorry, that's a population, 16,816 units is our target for housing units by 2044. Currently, we have a baseline supply of 9,202 units. There is a methodology for establishing these alternative numbers, like not familiar with it at the top of my head, but I can definitely provide that. Or you can come to the meeting on Monday.
And then, and then with the ADUs, right? We don't really have control over that. It has to be like a thousand square feet. It can go on almost any piece of property. We're being mandated on that. Is the city gonna do SEPA? Is the state gonna do SEPA? And how come the legislators get a mandate so much to the cities when the cities try so hard to control what they have? So a lot of this is mandated already to us, isn't it that correct? And that's what I understand it to be. And they're trying to also sell it to seniors to trying to make, if you sell your home, you make all this money. I just watched this presentation on it this morning. And you can sell your home and make all this money if you build like four ADUs in your front yard. And it's just, I think it's being sold in a way that's a little terrifying to some people if they knew what was going on.
So I think that we don't know, you know, what the legislatures, legislators were, what they considered during their debate. We can probably go back to legislative history and look. But the way that we are looking to implement this is, is, I think, the least impactful way that we can do it at the moment. And we, but we must comply with the law. You're right about that.
We can't go under it, right? So we we'd only be able to go over it like Seattle is. So how do we not do the impact of it? Because we're being mandated that we have to.
So a couple of things that I've looked into, and I'll turn it back over to these guys here in a second, but water from the city of Everett is not a concern, according to a presentation that we saw from Snoomish County Cities last week. So there will be plenty of water available to serve. As far as SEPA requirements for the impact of this, it's my understanding that recently the legislature removed the requirement for SEPA for single-family homes.
Yes.
And I don't know if they went beyond that or not, but so the the SEPA requirement for those types of developments are no longer, no longer in place.
So that that goes any wetlands or any unprotected areas are no longer really considered something that we need to protect?
No, I'll give this back to the current experts, but we do have requirements in the sustainability portion of our com plan along with adopted code requirements for distances that you needed, depending on how the wetland is graded and that type of thing. But that's getting a little bit far of, from what my familiarity is, if you guys have a little bit more.
Yeah.
And my last question would be, why do we have to vote on a com plan if the state's already mandating regulations to us?
Well, um, what I would say to that is, I mean, we're required to adopt comprehensive plans and periodically update them. Before it was every eight years. They changed that to every 10 years. So the city is undergoing that periodic update right now. It's a major update because of all these legislative requirements that we need to think about it thoughtfully, make sure that it's least impactful to the community. We need to ensure that there's community input on a lot of the things that we're talking about today. So we have the House Bill 1110 middle housing that we're discussing today. We have to incorporate ADUs, so we need to allow for two ADUs on every single family lot. And that could be as attached units, it could be detached, there's different scenarios. None of this can be done without having the dimensional standards in place. So we also need to look at how that looks in terms of form of the building, make sure that it's conforming to code and, um, yeah, so I'd say we we were.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, no, I understand the questions. We, um, we're working with Planning Commission to get to a draft comprehensive plan that we feel comfortable bringing to council for your review and hopeful adoption in, in the coming months, so.
Another time we can talk about, I like what you said, make it least impactful. If somebody built 12 apartments, to me, that would be really impactful. And so it's kind of, you're looking at a holistic viewpoint from the city's point of view on the impact to the city?
Yes. Yeah. And so we have the EIS process looks at that as well. What are the impacts in terms of accommodating all this population and growth? So it it looks at what the impacts are, how can we mitigate that? And so that sort of sets the framework to ensure that we are incorporating this, implementing this in a way that's efficient and environmentally sound.
And then when you're looking at ADUs, and I don't remember, I just remember hearing it a few months ago, if you live close by light rail, you could have up to four ADUs in your.
So there is a middle housing for tier two cities. We're a tier three city, which means we only need to allow two units on every lot. I mean, that's only a zones that are single family. So we're not talking town center, we're not talking multifamily zones. So in all the RS 4,800, 7,200, 8,400, RST, those are the only zones that we're talking about here today. That's where we need to allow the base unit density of two units per lot. So the four unit that you're talking about, that's for tier two cities. If you're within a, I think, quarter mile of a major transit stop, you need to allow for at least four units on every lot.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to add to that, these are targets. So they're not, you have to have this many people, you have to have this much housing, but we have to plan for it, right? And since GMA came into effect back in 1990, it's, it's been the same way. Of course, there's been changes to the legislation and we're seeing more recently this addition of a focus on housing and providing a variety of housing types. So we, we do need to plan to meet these targets that you see on the screen. I think what's important to remember is we do, you do have some input on how that looks and where that goes. And I think that's important to focus on is that's really the driver with the Planning Commission and council is you do have control over those things. We're doing an environmental impact statement on the comprehensive plan and it's to address those things, Laura, that you, Councilmember Sonmore, that you're talking about, which is, do we have enough water? Do we have enough sewage capacity? Do we have the appropriate road network? Those are all those things that go along with the planning to make sure that where we're putting these things are the best location that we possibly can. And I think that's the whole look at how we can do the best we can with the numbers that we've got. So I, you know, hang in there with us and I think we've got months to talk about this. The Planning Commission as well is really focused on this. And I think it's important that we really have, you know, we have until June of next year to talk about this, particularly middle housing. So let's take all that time until we have to put something in place to to adopt it.
Go ahead. Let's, let's have Councilmember Murray.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you. That's what I wanted to hear, is it's just a target. And I'm not mad at the city, I'm mad at the state for putting the mandates that we don't have that control over. And so I'm, I'm glad you put that out there because if you hadn't put that out there, I would have. So that's exactly, I think, I'm glad you guys are on that page because it was frightening like reading some of the comments and some of the things that are being done and Seattle's going overboard. And I've had neighbors come and say, what's going on? You know, you're gonna wipe out the neighborhood. And I'm like, no. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think we need to remember that Seattle's a tier one city, we're a tier three city. And, you know, if, if, if council wants additional variety of housing types, then I think we have that discussion. I, I will say that staff is very interested in seeing, hey, what of those variety of housing types can we use in the city? Because they are going to provide homeownership opportunities in those different types of units, what that you folks have all been talking about since I've been here, which is the choice between not only a single family residence or just apartments, but having the opportunity to do that middle housing, which can be then condominiumized and it allows for homeownership. So I think there are some positives along with the planning and that's the discussions that we need to have is what would you guys like to see there? So there's opportunity.
Okay, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the conversation. I don't know that I was quite ready for this conversation exactly today, but I appreciate that that we're having some of it, I guess, in terms of thinking about what some of these things we're saying mean and how that impacts our conversations in the coming weeks and months. I will acknowledge that this is an area deeply personal to me. And so, you know, it's probably the area I've changed my perspective the most on in terms of like as an individual growing up in this area, like what I thought was, was what I wanted at kind of getting to my current state where I'm trying to figure out what is best for our community as a whole, which is not always exactly the same as what I would want as an individual. And I will, I will name that. But I guess when we talk about least impact, because I've heard that a couple of places now, and I guess I want to ensure that we have some framing of what least impact means. I think we learned recently that over half of our community is now renters. So over half of our community is at high risk of displacement. And I appreciate Councilmember Payne Donovan bringing up the question there because I think that's an incredibly important part of the conversation is how do we help provide opportunities for people that call our community home already to stay here if they want to stay here? And when we get to the deeply personal part, I don't live in the community I grew up in. When I was making a decision to buy a home, that was my first choice. I couldn't afford to live there. I worry that that is my children's future and I worry that if we don't give alternatives and bring down the house, the cost of housing, which I know is, as former, former high school DECA president, supply and demand is, I think, in our blood, you know? I think there's a lot to be said for the fact that we have for decades and decades not provided enough supply for our community that wants to live here. So I guess just in terms of least impact, I guess I want to make sure that part of that conversation is the impact of people who don't already own homes here and how they can stay in this community, if they want to stay in this community. And then I think in terms of the, the conversations about the other impacts, like there is real impact and I don't want to, I hear the concerns, I share a lot of the concerns about how do we navigate growth? But I guess for me, the question is not, do we have enough? Clearly, we don't have enough of anything. So what are our end goal? Like what is our goal? And I think we've established as a council, what we see is our goal, right? We want a welcoming community for everyone. How do we get there? And then we work backwards, just like we all do with goals at work, at home, wherever. And so I guess I would love to understand how we plan for enough versus like doing the bare minimum. So I guess I just want to make sure I share my perspective in terms of framing, like I think those are important conversations for us to have as well. Change is hard. I know change is hard. That's, that's real. I think, you know, figuring out how we mitigate it is incredibly important. And I guess I don't want to lose sight of the end goal, which at least for me, and I think as a council, given our, our shared goals, is that this is a place where I, I don't know how many of us could afford to move into this community now who don't already own our homes here. And that worries me. I want people to be able to continue to come here. Like, I love that I live here, I don't see myself leaving, but I don't know that I could move into our community now and that's, that's sad. So anyhow, I, I know it's a tough conversation. I appreciate the, the, you know, I think airing of concerns and, you know, sharing those so we can try to get to the best solution forward for, or the best, you know, I think solution for our community. But I guess for me, those are, I mean, least impact. I think it's important to think about impact on everyone. And then not just, do we have enough, but like, how do we create more? And I don't mean necessarily just housing, but like, you know, when we talk about infrastructure, we talk about the concerns, whether that's parking or whether like, I, I think I would like to not have a scarcity mindset in this. Like, I'd really like to go like, how do we figure this out and how do we like really figure it out? Because I think despite best efforts, we haven't done that yet. And I don't think that's because of lack of wanting, but clearly we have a serious issue. And I think it's a serious issue that we have to do things differently to, to make a change. And I think, I guess remembering that no action is not a decision with, or without consequence. Like, when we choose not to do anything and to maintain the status quo, there are real impacts of that. And so I think thinking through like, we don't do anything, what is the impact? If we do something, what is the impact? Which of those impacts is more aligned with our values and goals? So anyway, that's how I'd like to approach this conversation, at least for me.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Did you have more?
Yeah, I just wanted to give feedback because when I started on the council, probably about 12 years ago, we didn't want any more low-income housing because when I grew up here, we were the poor kids, right? And it was wonderful because we were all on the same economic base and nobody had the fancy cars or this or that. And so, but what I'm getting at is, we, we didn't want any more low income in our city. We wanted other cities to absorb low income and, and put more housing in for other cities, right? But then, of course, we had the recession. And so I'm hearing you say what you want at your age. And at my age, I'd like a bigger house. And I'm hearing that from a lot of seniors, they'd like a bigger house. And you wouldn't think that, right? And so, so when your kids come to Frishen and buy their own house, it may be a whole of other ballgame. Because when I came here, everybody, I shouldn't say they're poor, they were moving out of the city. And we all are on the same kind of economic plane, so to speak, through our parents. And then our city didn't want to be any more low-income housing. Now we want tons of housing. And then, you know, there's going to be earthquakes in Japan and California today, but there's also going to be more recessions and then we're going to go through more, taking back homes and different things. So it, I know we want. So it, I know we want a lot and we want it, we want it to help all these people that are coming in from, I don't know if we have all these jobs, but, you know, if our job goes away, they want to go to another state and then we'll have created all these open homes that nobody can afford or the interest rates creep down. But it's going to ebb and flow, right? And that's what I'm going back to. It's a target. And so we may want all this, but we have to know it's going to ebb and flow. And I'm just glad that the city understands. And Jonathan, thank you for your patience. I wasn't picking on you. But to know that it's a target and we have to look at the community we have here now. And I think that's really important because that's who got you into office and those are the people that you're trying to support and understand. And, you know, look at the value of your home now. I mean, it's, you could move to, a lot of people are doing that, that I work with retire and they're buying homes, they sell their homes for like a million dollars here and they're buying a vacation house and another home in Wyoming or something. It's it's changing. So you just never quite know where we're going with a lot of this. So it'll ebb and flow.
Anyone else before we continue? All right.
All right. So now we're going to go through the ordinance overview, and that's based on Commerce guidance as they interpret the requirements of House Bill 1110. And then it's important to note that we're still working through this with Planning Commission. We do have some preliminary feedback from Planning Commission in terms of what they're thinking as a group, but none of this has been set in stone. And so today, we're purely just providing an overview, try to understand council perspective and go from there.
Thanks, Jonathan. And so as part of the guidance from Department of Commerce, the 77 jurisdictions that are required to adopt ordinance were categorized into three tiers based off of population size. Currently, Molok Terrace is considered a tier three city, meaning has a population less than 25,000 people. For cities in this category, there were a couple other provisions on making sure that I was a county with a large population and has a boundary to go to DJ. But that's a long way of saying Molok Terrace is required to adopt a draft middle housing ordinance and is identified as a tier three city. However, I also want to note that the city Molok Terrace also has a population estimate around 24,260 people. And so one of the questions that we wanted to pose for for discussion, I'm not the one controlling this, this is the one, next slide, please, is. Perfect. Thank you. I, still in COVID rules, I'm like, gotta keep this in. So what I was saying is, so Molok Terrace is almost approaching that 25,000 mark, population mark. And so one of the questions that we're exploring through this ordinance development is, even though we can do the bare minimum and think about the requirements as a tier three city for the city of Molok Terrace, what happens if we actually thought about the growth target for 2044 and plan for those populations? As a part of this effort as a tier two city, one of the immediate requirements we're going to start thinking about is what types of middle housing do we want to see within the city? As a tier three city, there is no minimum, but as a tier two city, we would have to adopt a minimum of six of the nine identified. Next slide, please. You've heard me use this word several times today, but one of the core topics we're to think about is around unit density. Unit density is defined as a metric of for housing density on a lot, and it's measured by units per lot. Most typically, when you think about residential densities by units per acre or units by net acre, when you take out wetlands and critical areas, unit density simply looks at the number of units on a single lot. This only applies to middle housing. And so as a tier three city, the minimum unit density is two units per lot. Essentially, what that means is the allowance of a duplex, a triplex, or townhome on a single lot today. When looking at a tier two city, there are some additional provisions that could be considered. We have exciting new light rail station coming in this month. And one of the words that we're exploring definitions brought up was around exploring housing around major transit stops within the city today, that's the light rail station. And so there is a consideration of when you're within a quarter mile of the light rail station, that unit density can jump up to four units per lot or fourplex. I'll show a map of what that looks like, but spoiler, it involves a lot of the town center zoning and I-5, none of those of which we're recommending any changes today. For a tier two city, there's also really another provision on density in thinking about affordable housing. And so as a density bonus, a requirement that would need to be adopted is that a developer can go up to four units on the lot if one of those lots is deemed affordable. If you're asking me what affordable means, it means if you're owning the house, you have a household income of 80% or less. If you're renting, that percentage drops down to 60. Next slide, please. Parking. So with off-street parking requirements, I'm actually gonna, I've overly, I've simplified the language here, but I'm going to read from what the RCW says, is that that a city shall not require off-street parking as a condition of permitting development of middle housing within a half mile distance of a major transit stop. What that means is that if you're developing within a half mile of the light rail station, a city shall not require off-street parking as a condition of that development. The next part is on lots with a square footage of less than 6,000 square feet. That the city shall not require more than one unit per middle housing unit for lots less than 6,000 square feet. So if you have a duplex, you can have one off-street parking per unit of that duplex, triplexes, three, and so forth. That number actually increases to two when that lot is 6,000 square feet or greater. I will note that this is actually a core requirement of middle housing development with the middle housing ordinance. This is not a can, it's a must. It's, so there is additional guidance coming out of at the end of this year on what it means to think about off-street parking requirements of middle housing. And there are some initial provisions around thinking about alternatives to adding additional parking spaces. But I will say at its core, this is the main language that is being required by Commerce for cities to adopt.
I'd just like to add that for our stuff that's already zoned for town center, it wouldn't affect the parking requirements that we have in place now. This would, this is in relationship to middle housing and proximity to the light rail station. This is, I think, going to be one of our key discussion items moving forward, I'm sure, parking and parking requirements, so.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore.
Can you go over what the state is mandating for parking? Because I didn't think it was much. And when do we reach tier two? Because that was the four that I forgot I had read.
Yeah, so the question, if I'm understanding, is what are the was mandated from Commerce for parking requirements, off-street parking requirements?
So if you build, if you use the ADUs and there's four and it's downtown because it's, because like if I had a house and I knew I could have four ADUs and I'm in downtown, I would think, well, as soon as we hit 25,000, I'm going to build four. And what would be the parking impact?
Yeah, so ADUs follow a different parking standard and they're not considered middle housing typologies. And so these requirements would actually apply for like duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. Disordinance will not tackle parking requirements for ADUs. That's through the comp plan update. With regards to middle housing, what that means is that if you have a lot that's this 6,000 square feet or less, the city cannot require more than one off-street parking space for that unit. Whether if it's a driveway with no garage or a garage with a shared driveway with other neighboring houses, it's one unit. However, it does not preclude a developer from wanting to put in a proposal for two or three spaces on that lot as well, too. It just says that as a city, as cities cannot say like, oh, like, as a city, we cannot require any more than one. However, a developer could come in through a recommendation of having two if it can fit, if they can fit the second off-street parking space on the lot. I will say, though, when thinking about housing affordability, off-street parking is often one of the biggest costs associated with the house. And so when we're trying to think about how do you plan for moderate low income housing, I always say that looking at parking requirements is one way of thinking about how do you ensure that the cost to build that house is significantly less.
Why do we always have to, who makes the most money when we put in these units? And I always hear it doesn't pencil, but I feel it's going to be a while before electric cars, whatever it's going to happen in the next couple of years, the requirements, I don't think we're ever going to get there based on some of the feedback I'm hearing about electric cars. But middle housing and low income housing, people should still be able to have access to a garage. And I'm just thinking, sometimes, you know, if we look at where our supplies come from and what the builders make, you know, if a builder, like I said, has two $500,000 homes and they put up eight and they sell them for, you know, $6 million, you know, where does it pencil? So why are we always saying that it has to be a certain way?
Yeah, you know, I would actually, if we can go to the next slide, Jonathan, to help answer this question. You know, one of the things we think about with with middle housing development is one thing I hear all the time from the public is around traffic impacts. There is a light rail station opening in this month. And I think one of the things to balance is thinking about, how do we make transit and cars are often portrayed as going head to head with each other, but oftentimes, actually, they're very complementary to each other as a transit service, right? I'm looking forward to the day where I can catch the light rail from home and come here instead of having to bring my car. And I think we oftentimes think about like, well, if we know where there's more housing being developed, if there are more households who want to come live here because of the light rail station, or recognizing their population is growing, how do we make sure that we have a space for folks to have to move around as well, too? Traffic jams are one of the biggest concerns that I hear from folks when talking about middle housing. And so there's an opportunity here in thinking about, how do you like, how do we sort of celebrate and capitalize off of this, off of this opportunity of like, we can help reduce traffic if we if we actually promote transit and light rail use as well, too? We can't expand the roads here currently because not only would you never have enough road space for all the traffic, you would lose out on a lot of opportunities for additional housing as well, too, or for parks or for schools. And so when thinking about off-street parking requirements, I would try to also think about the larger picture of like, we need to think about like, we, there is a projection of like a target, growth target of not just housing, but jobs as well, too. And I think there's a really unique opportunity in understanding that like, what we're, it's in this ordinance, is not meant to preclude from anyone from building a single family house if they want to. It's not meant to preclude anyone from building a duplex with a two-door garage if they want to. But at the same time, like, how do we also have an opportunity to allow for the greatest design flexibility for housing and job growth? I do a lot of middle housing work throughout Washington State and spoken with a lot of developers who are very big on single family housing development. And they tell me that middle housing isn't going to pencil off because people want their big house. But at the same time, when thinking about what would it, when asked, what would it take to build a duplex or a triplex? The biggest feedback that I got is to ensure that there's enough flexibility for that development to happen. And off-street parking is often one of those things to think about, to allow for that flexibility, to allow for opportunity for middle housing to be developed as well. I just want to also add first, I apologize, I, I've been talking a lot about middle housing this week. And so I'm, I, all my projects have combined into into one brain, into one brain cell in my head. But I also want to acknowledge when, the reason why I'm making the argument for a tier two or tier two guidelines for it is, is that with the light rail, we are, it's no surprise that we want to make sure that there are housing and land use policies that are complementary to the significant transit investment within a city. My second point is that, as mentioned, we are well expected to exceed that 25,000 resident threshold soon. And so not just making sure that folks who live here today have a space for themselves, but for their kids and for their friends, for their families to have an opportunity to move to a city, Molok Terrace as well. And lastly, as I mentioned, one feedback I've heard a lot is ensuring design flexibility. So how do we ensure that we have the greatest flexibility to support housing growth within the city?
Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a quick question. So we are, I was just looking at the population estimate. So current estimate is 24,260. So we are, math's not my strength, 740 away from that next tier? Okay. All right. So, okay. So essentially, the question is like, are we meeting the minimum mandate or are we proactively planning for that next step up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Chris Hemsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think what we need to consider, in addition to all the arguments you just made, is we're going to meet, be a tier two city within a couple of years. We know that. And at that point, if we if we plan as a tier three city, then in two years, we're going to have to do all the work all over again. So it makes more sense to plan now as a tier two city so that we know that we are meeting the requirements that will be obligated upon us in two years or so.
All right.
All right. Can we go to the next slide, please? And so this is a quick map that we put together just to show where where within a city is being impacted by its ordinance. And so the middle housing ordinance is meant to impact any residential zone where a single family is allowed currently. What that translates to is all the yellow boxes within the city currently. We are not proposing any recommendations to the town center. A lot of great work has been done there already. We're not making any recommendations. And we are currently not making any recommendations for multifamily housing. And so what this ordinance gets at its heart is that the opportunity within residential zones where a single family is allowed, the opportunity for future development to be either a single family house or a middle housing development. One of the core considerations is that middle housing cannot have any more constraints than a single family have currently. What that means is that middle housing has to follow the same, the same guidelines that a single family house has today. And so just want to put in the context how this will be impacted from a geographic level.
Okay, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to jump in with questions as we have visuals in front of us as a visual person. So it's really interesting, I guess, for me to see this map. And I mean, fascinating just because of, you know, I think all the conversations we've had thus far and how many of, or how much of our community is within that fourth mile or half mile radius that like we are not talking about in terms of like subarea planning. And so I guess I'm curious, I guess, conversations that have been had about Planning Commission related to that, or if there have been. And it just, I think it's interesting that we've got our Lake Ballenger and Gateway neighborhoods, you know, that are not part of our current subarea planning, that are much more within that, you know, buffer than I would have realized, I guess. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so for the current comp plan update, we're looking at Cascade via Millody Hill. Definitely in the horizon is to look at all the other subarea neighborhoods. So that's written in some policy language in our land use element that we're proposing to ensure that we're regularly updating these subarea plans and establishing new ones. So for example, Lake Ballenger, we need to establish one, Cedar Terrace, Gateway. So yeah, that's definitely something we're looking into.
Were there any, I guess, concerns about potentially the impact, I guess, of kind of the order of those things?
I don't think there is because even though there's maybe a focus on what the Planning Commission wanted to do, we're looking at all areas. And so, you know, if you look at the alternatives in the environmental impact statement, it hits all of these areas. And I think because we kind of have this focus area, I think that's where we need to just focus our conversations first and foremost of, you know, town center is a big part of that, but for the other two areas. part of that, but for the other two areas that are in yellow, and then take a look at what's being proposed as, in my opinion, would be alternative two because we can't serve alternative three, we found out going through our EIS process. We don't have enough water, we don't have enough capacity. So really, we can serve the middle growth alternative the most effectively. And so then I think we need to take a look at what we designated around those areas with the Planning Commission, City Council, and see what's appropriate in there in that half-mile. So I think we have some changes that we've proposed in that alternative, too. This is where I think we need some more conversation, and this is a conversation we've been having with the Planning Commission in their last couple of meetings and will continue to have. So.
Helpful, thank you. Councilmember Salmor.
I want to go back to the unintended consequences, and I thought it was really nice that you said someday you'll take a light rail here and walk here. Also remember, how do I say this elegantly? I've been on council 24 years, and I used to think like that, too, and now there's no way I'd walk all the way over here. And so you think differently as you get older. And so just kind of always keep in mind the different age levels that you're looking at and different things like that. But one of the things it brought up for me is, in that area, we've closed Melody Hill Evergreen School, the school on 220th, the Christian School, and I know they say population is dropping in the schools, but where are we going to put a school in there if people don't have cars and they can't take the light rail to get to school because the kids don't want to walk up 44th because they're embarrassed to get to the high school? So do we have to plan for housing in the middle of, or telling, and we've talked to our school district about this, and they're like, well, we don't have any money. And so where are those kids going to go to school?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have an answer to that, but, yeah.
I want you to pick a lot. Unintended consequences that, you know, a lot of times, we can't foresee what's going to happen, and we haven't accounted for the schools, or we haven't accounted for different things. But that's something that we're not required to do, right? So we just want to, oh, it's not? We don't have to look at schools?
I mean, so we are, that's part of our capital facility planning. We have a capital facilities element, which includes looking at schools within the city and how can we encourage our relationship with the school district, for example, and ensuring that there's adequate supply of.
And most school districts are failing, like, if you, I have a friend who does in Marysville, and they're failing horribly on the budget. In fact, the state was going to take over Marysville School District. And so, I mean, we can have all the good relationships we want, but if people don't pay for that school, and we've asked, I mean, we've lost at least three public elementary schools, so, I mean, how do you mandate that? And you don't have to answer, but I'm just.
You go to the legislature and change the way they fund schools.
Well, that would be, that would be lovely, but how do we get there, you know? And my dad was a school teacher, so that's why I always have schools on the back of my head. And our family was based on levies and livlifs to, you know, even have a job, so that would be wonderful.
Okay, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just give a quick, I guess, aside, since I spent two and a half years on district, school district committees, looking at enrollment and facilities prior to joining the council. I will say, I think one of the things that would be really helpful is for us to remember that our lived experiences don't necessarily represent others. I think one of the most fascinating things for me coming out of that experience, as a millennial, an elder millennial, but a millennial with children, who was there because I have children in the school district, was that, you know, we got feedback from planners that we didn't expect a lot of growth in, and this was, you know, school district-wide, but we didn't expect a lot of growth in the school district despite the fact that we were growing from a housing unit perspective because we didn't, we, those were just going to be millennials commuting, you know, without kids commuting for work. And so I think it's a good reminder, I will say, I joked when we were down at the new tracks opening about the fact that I would love to live there with my children, because candidly, as a single mom with a huge yard, the idea that I wouldn't have to do any of that and I'd have a wonderful rooftop deck that I could send them to go, like, my son who loves chess could go play on a big chess board upstairs with maybe neighbors who could entertain him, like, that sounded lovely to me. So I think, I think it's just an important reminder that, one, like, not everyone's lives look like ours and not everybody's desires are the same as ours. And then I think also, two, like, things are changing and they change quickly, and sometimes it's really hard to know what the future holds. But I think, you know, when we look at who is living in apartment buildings and children who live in our community, lots of them live in multifamily houses. And so I think there's just, I guess, as an aside, like, I think it's really important to remember that, like, those things are real, and then to communicate within governmental agencies, right? Because we don't control the school district. We're not in charge of the school district in the city. We work with, you know, what, five other jurisdictions, you know, to, you know, partner and support the school district, but they're their own entity. And so, like, we should absolutely be making sure that once we're done with this process, that we are having good conversations about what future growth in Molly Terrace looks like, so that we don't see the overcrowding that we see at, like, Cedar Way Elementary School. We haven't planned effectively, you know? But I think we didn't necessarily know, but we have the opportunity to do better, and I don't think not allowing children to live in our community is the solution. I think it is, how do we find capacity within our schools to house them and educate them well?
Anyone else before we continue? All right.
Thank you. And just want to note, the last few sections of what's covered in this ordinance will look at dimensional standards, which is thinking about how a house fits with an existing lot. I think in our initial review, I will just say upfront that a lot of the cities currently meets Commerce's recommendations for dimensional standards. So this includes front yards, side yards, side setbacks, building heights, how much of a lot can a parcel cover, a kind of house cover? And so, so we'll be looking at that. The next section is on design standards, and so thinking about the, oftentimes, often called like, the aesthetics of a house or duplex, ensuring that there's enough open space. If there's a cottage development, that's adequate for the tenants of a cottage development or courtyard apartment. Also looking some things as like, doors and windows. I will say, this section, the majority of the recommendations from Commerce are recommendations. They are not requirements. And so there's a lot of flexibility in thinking about design standards for middle housing. The only design standard that is a requirement is that if a cottage housing development or courtyard apartment development is, is adopted as one of the topologies, that there are some open space considerations to hence make sure that they are in the courtyard apartments or cottage housing at its core. The last portion is around infrastructure standards. With new middle housing development, you might have a driveway with private driveways into your house. And so really, a lot of this really tackles to ensure that there are adequate transportation standards applied for middle housing for the driveways and the private roads, if there are any, to ensure that fire can get through. There's been some review with, with Public Works and the Fire Department currently, and so a lot of infrastructure standards looks at how, how, how transportation and fire is being serviced to, into middle housing recommendations. Next slide, please. And lastly, I just want to say, for we, part of our engagement, we've asked, we've been, I've been presenting to the Planning Commission, and I've asked them to kind of weigh in, been having several conversations, weighing in on the recommendations thus far. And so just want to share some of the key highlights of what we heard. No formal recommendation hasn't, has been made, and so these are all just drafts and initial thoughts. And so there's a thought around Molly Terrace should proceed with tier-two guidance. People like the idea of having all nine of the topologies that I've been talking about today. There's been general support in the conversations around unit density. Again, that's two units per lot for single-family lots, up to four with near transit and affordability density bonus if one of those units are affordable. There's some recommendations around cottage housing, but I'll say, this is something that we need further discussion about in terms of what does cottage housing mean within Molly Terrace, and thinking about development standards. General support for the infrastructure standards for Molly Terrace, again, thinking about driveways, ensuring that fire trucks are able to get through. And there are general mixed feelings, opinions currently about the off-street parking requirements, those that are mandated from Commerce. And so I think with that, that concludes our presentation.
So now, where the questions come. But I guess you've already asked a lot of questions already. Do you have some? Does someone have their hand? Oh, uh-uh. Rory Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, great presentation, I think. We've had, we've had a rich conversation so far. I have a few thoughts, just in terms of feedback about what I'd like to see both in, well, I guess I'll say I'm generally supportive of your recommendations, but I also want to encourage, you know, you as staff and us as we continue to think about, sort of, you know, we talk about mitigating, you know, the growth that these goals will, once implemented, bring, and think about the, you know, the other sort of elements and standards in the comp plan as we, you know, look at mitigating car trips, you know? Are there jobs in our fair city that you don't need to, that, you know, whether you're walking or driving, that you're not, you know, generating as many car trips, you know? As we get more middle housing and you live, you know, any place in town, is there a bodega that you could walk to? Is there a grocery store? I see the grocery store in the house. You know, these are the types of quality-of-life things that, that I think, you know, that middle housing, this housing density, that these, these goals are going to bring are, you know, these are opportunities that I think a lot about, and I think, you know, I wish we had more of now. I think we've got some, some really great institutions and businesses in town, but, you know, I live here in town center, I can walk to the butcher, I can walk to the post office. You know, I don't need to, to drive to get, you know, the things that are within easy reach. Let's say, that said, I do drive a lot, and I think, you know, the way that we design town and set ourselves up for success in the future really depends on sort of, you know, the, these other sort of difficult to grasp, things that will hopefully mitigate the, you know, the car trips, the, you know, the unfortunate sort of growing pains that growth brings, you know? Street design to reduce speeding and provide, you know, safer, you know, more, more open spaces to walk. And I think it's hard, it's hard to picture, I think, sometimes, the, the opportunity both of, or the, the reality that more growth will, will bring while also trying to plan for, you know, higher-quality spaces. But I'm hopeful that we can get there. I want to encourage us and you, as you're doing this work, to try to grab on to those, those opportunities and be creative, think about, you know, this stuff in the next, you know, 20-plus years, because it's not going to happen all at once. You know, our small and medium lot sizes around town mean that, you know, it's, middle housing isn't going to develop overnight in many instances, and there will still be single-family houses, you know, built and rebuilt along the way. But I want to make sure we're reducing barriers and really sort of seizing the high-quality opportunities that we can over the coming decade. So that was a rambling non-question for you, but thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Salmor.
First, I wanted to, did you say me?
Yeah, you can go first. I just noticed that there's a hand up.
You can have Steve go first.
You want him to go first? Gone, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity. Councilmember Salmor. Hopefully you can hear me. Really, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. It was a wonderful conversation to kind of just listen in on. A lot of the questions I had were addressed and were picked up by other council members. So really, just wanted to leave with the comment that I do think that it makes sense for us to be planning for tier-two, wanted to support the Mayor Protim's point, that we just be redoing all this over again and having, having had the opportunity to sit with our volunteer group, if you will, our commission. I just would hate to think that, that work could get lost or get antiquated that quickly, if you will. So I love the idea of us planning for tier-two instead of, you know, hovering down here in three. And then lastly, just to remind everybody, the theme here is, these are targets. And so just like, in reality, right now, we're actually set up to be way more dense than we actually are as a city, but someone has to come and build and do that. So just because we are making these tough decisions and setting up for the potential of all these new residents and friends and folks to be a part of this community, doesn't mean that that will happen. That's a whole other set of factors and variables that have nothing to do with us and everything to do with us as a county, as a city, and as a region, quite frankly. So just kind of reminding people, whatever we put in play, so I love that you want all nine, doesn't mean that we would get that because somebody has to come in and do that, but we do have to set up for it to happen. So again, thank you for the presentation, and this, again, the overarching piece of, like, this isn't going to happen, this is how it can happen. I appreciate it as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Salmor.
I must have been on the same wavelength as Councilman Woodard, because I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to ask questions during the presentation, because this is a work session. Ben, and thank you for taking my questions, because by the time we get done, sometimes we don't remember the questions, and you were trying to summarize it, too. So we're here to have communication and dialogue, right? And to improve our communication is to ask questions. And we're here right now to educate the council on what we need to know, because we need to be a little bit more sophisticated on how we learn and how we're receiving information. And I just wanted to follow up, too, with what you had talked about on apartments, because that seems like another unintended consequences. And one of our former council people always loved that word, so I'm borrowing that word from Michelle. And so Michelle Angret, who used to be on our council, and that was a thing that she said a lot, is a lot of times we do something and we don't think about the consequences. And right now, we're seeing so many apartments coming in, but when we were on the council years ago, that wasn't the way we thought it. We thought we would have condos and townhomes and a lot of different things. So you had also mentioned reducing barriers, and so we can maybe talk about that more because I felt like the state reduced every barrier, but I guess we'll learn more.
Is that what their plan?
Yeah, but I, I'm sorry, I just, I cringe at what they did. And so, and I'm right, I have a right to have an opinion and a right to say I just don't believe in what they just did, but I know they're trying to help, so I'll give them that. But there's a lot of things that we can be learning from each other, and one is, you know, cities have the right to maintain and zone the way they should in their own cities. But, but just thank you again for the dialogue.
All right, anyone else? Did you want to go? Oh, Councilmember Murray and Ben.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say, I know I said a lot already, so I will, yes, stick mostly with thank you, and I appreciated all of the dialogue and opportunity to have it. I did have, I guess, two questions, though, that I didn't get out in the many times I spoke already. One is around the density bonus. Is that for the life of the property, or is there an expiration on that? For, sorry, the density bonus for affordable units? And so I'm curious if that is something, if the affordability extends for the life of the development?
I believe there's a expiration, it's probably like, I'm going to say 50 years, right?
And is that something that is set in the law, or is that something that we have control over, I think, in talking about what's, what's within local control and what's? I guess I'd be curious to better understand that, because I will say, that is one of my concerns in terms of unintended consequences, is affordability now is really important, and trying to balance affordability now versus affordability long-term is something that I definitely think about when we're looking at some of these opportunities. So I just, that would be helpful to understand. And then my other question was just around. Um, and then my other question was just around, um, there's, I think, going back to my comment about like being somebody who appreciates visuals. Um, are there, and I don't need, you don't need to have examples now, but it would be really helpful for me if you have examples of places that, you know, have moved forward with some of these, um, ordnance, similar ordinances already that we could take a look at and/or refer, um, residents of our community who have questions to take a look at. I think that would be really helpful and that could be, I mean, local would be great because it's always kind of fun to take a field trip, but, um, it could also be other places where maybe there's just good imagery online that we could take a look at. I think that would be really helpful.
I would say fun fact, one of our first pictures is local from Malik Terrace. Um, but.
Right by my house, actually. A couple of them were.
Um, the power of Google Maps. I, I also want to say there's a lot of great resources for visuals. Um, the SiteLight Institute has some great, has a great photo library of middle housing examples. Commerce also has a fantastic library of, of, of local Washington examples of middle housing as well. So, um, as I mentioned, we've been, cities have been, had policies around duplexes for decades, um, but now it's just more in the forefront and allowing an opportunity and where single families law as well too. So there's a lot of great examples out there.
Awesome, thank you.
Mayor Protem, well?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great discussion tonight. Thank you, thank you for the presentation, very, um, informative and helpful, I think, and, uh, allowing the, the community and, and council to understand, uh, some of the choices we have and some of the issues we're going to be dealing with. I, I think one, you know, we talked about the consequences and, and the challenges of growth, but I also want to remind us that there are opportunities, uh, that come with growth as well. And, and part of the whole reason for planning is to understand the challenges and be able to plan ahead for those challenges and, and help us, and we're gonna, we're gonna get into a discussion and throughout the, the coming months and years about placemaking. And, and so with that growth, if we do it right, we can make this a better place to live, uh, even with more people. Uh, but also understanding that there are places that it makes more sense for higher density, more, more housing, more growth and other areas we want to preserve. Another part of it is choices, allowing more choices, which gets back to the types, the typologies. Um, I, I agree that we should allow all nine because I want choices. What works for councilmember Murray doesn't work necessarily for councilmember Sonmore, which doesn't necessarily work for me. We all have different, uh, ideas of what we want and what works best for us and the best community can provide a variety of choices so that we can all live here happily, right? And we can all have, uh, the different options and make the different decisions that we want that fits our lifestyle and our needs and our, uh, the way we want to live, which comes back to, again, we talked about parking and trips and garages and things like that. Well, I personally drive. I'm gonna need a garage and that's the kind of home I'm gonna buy is one with a garage that allows me to get, get around. Other people, and particularly the younger generations today, are changing. I have a completely different mentality right now in, I mean, it was a rite of passage at 16 to get a driver's license. That's not the case anymore. We're seeing thing, and that's part of, again, planning and understanding where things are going and home, you know, and homeownership was another thing and, and moving out of the house at the age of 18, that's, that's, that was something that was almost expected of us, but that's, those things have changed. Society's changing and allowing choices to, uh, to adapt to the society and those changes is a good thing. And so being able to plan ahead and address the challenges that are coming with growth, but also take advantage of it and create those opportunities and more homes means that here in town center means the possibility of getting that grocery store because they're, they're gonna, they're looking at those rooftops and the, or the rooftops are the number of housing units and the number of people they can serve. So by, by, but also we, we want to incorporate in things like open space and the, the courtyards and places for people to play. And so while the kids can go upstairs and play chess on the, on the board, but they also need a, a place to go outside and play in a park. So we've got to plan all of those different pieces and this is, I mean, the, this is broader conversation about the comprehensive plan, but just getting back to the middle housing, again, I think most importantly, it's about choices and, uh, planning ahead and knowing where we're going or we're gonna be in a, a tier two city soon enough, so we might as well, uh, start planning that way now. Um, let's allow more choices, more opportunities and recognize that people are gonna make their own choices on where they're gonna live and how they want to live and give them a variety of options to, to make Malik Terrace truly a home.
Oh, I, I, Steve Woodard's, um, hand came down, so that was, I thought he was, okay, so you weren't gonna ask another question. All right. Okay, so anyone else? All right. Oh, we, we have, we have a lot of future on this one. All right, well, thank you so much. Oh, we'll take a five-minute break. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we're back. And, uh, next on our agenda is the review of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, reallocation with our city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. So we receive, uh, the city of Mount Lake Terrace received a total of $5,962,279 in American Rescue Plan Act funds and those have been distributed over the past two years. But in an effort to make sure we use all of the grant dollars that, uh, we were allocated by the federal government through that program, over the past several months, we've been working with our departments and, uh, determining what, um, what dollars would be left over. As an example, uh, council allocated several hundred thousand dollars to purchasing body cams for the police department and that ultimate bill came in about $60,000 less than we originally budgeted. So there's money going back into that fund that now needs to be reallocated and committed before the end of 2024, uh, so that, uh, we don't have to return any of those Plan Act dollars to the federal government. So with that, in August of '22, council allocated the first tranche of, uh, American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And then last year, uh, council went through and allocated the rest. We have a remaining total balance of $219,314.03 and we have a couple of recommendations here, uh, for the reallocation of those dollars, including, uh, domestic violence services for $10,000, for, um, uh, Everyone Deserves to be Safe, which is a program run through Snohomish County and for Evergreen Playfield III, the turf and the tennis court, uh, resurface for the remaining fund balance. In addition, uh, council last year allocated $800,000 to replace the library roof and we thought, uh, that that would be enough, given the, um, money that we had allocated for the roof at the Mickey Corso clubhouse and for the police department. All of us were shocked when we received the bid to replace the HVAC unit and the, um, roof replacement at the police department building. The final bid, uh, Jeff had sent me the other day, it was 1.4 million, 32,000 and some odd dollars. Um, so that's why we are recommending reallocation of the library roof funds. Just as a comparison, the library roof is bigger than the PD roof, so we expect that work to cost, uh, more than the current bid that we just received. So the 800,000 that we have would not complete the, the renovations to the library roof. However, we are committed to making sure that the library roof gets done. We've known it needs to be done for some time and, uh, we're committed to finding the funding to make that happen. As you know, uh, the police department roof has numerous leaks throughout the winter. Um, those get patched by our facilities crews on an anticipated basis and they don't currently have a functioning HVAC unit. So this year, earlier this year, we dedicated money to provide temporary air conditioning during the summer months. Um, and I've heard, you know, anecdotally, uh, when they go, or when they're in there in the afternoon on the warmer days, that's, uh, it's very difficult for our police officers to, um, spend much time in that building. So even with the temporary AC that we have set up now. And with that, that's, uh, all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, councilmember Sonmore first and.
Just so I understand it, we, um, it would be the library roof and the HVAC to the police department and, um, an HVAC to the police department was 800,000 and now that bid is 1.4, so we're short between the 800 and the 1.4. Um, and so is that, what is the library roof's, um, bid right now?
We don't have a bid for the library roof.
Oh, so.
We were focused on, uh, uh, the police department first because of the leak issues and the lack of HVAC right now.
And that's the one that's 1.4?
The PD, yes.
Without the library?
Correct.
Just that roof?
Correct.
Oh, brother.
That's, that's what I said when I got the bid was, you're kidding, but, uh, yeah, but.
A million dollars to do the roof?
And the HVAC.
I'm still getting over the 1.4 first, but, um.
Well, 1.432 would take care of both the HVAC and the new roof for the police department.
Would, would you expect any, any, uh, extra there if they're with this transfer? I mean, would be, would be back here?
Have any left over?
No.
No, I don't believe we would. Um, you know, it, we would love to be able to do all three roofs, but, uh, a bid like that, like I said, shocking to, to everybody.
Councilmember, um, Murray?
That's okay. I was gonna say, I'm really bad with names, so I will never judge. Um, okay. Uh, I guess follow-up question. Do we have an update on the current state of the library roof and HVAC? I think particularly considering that the library is our cooling center for our area and we're in the middle of a heat warning, I think that is something that is top of mind for me.
Yeah. Uh, Jeff, would you like to chime in here?
Yes, absolutely. From the reports that I've received, which there have been none recently about the cooling or efficacy of the cooling anyway, um, we believe that the roof is functioning. There are leaks in the winter as well. There's common repairs by the crew. We did hire a contractor that did a bunch of fascia improvements. Also, they replaced a bunch of the concrete, um, tile roof, um, pieces to it just as, just repair work, but that's gonna be ongoing. We're gonna always have that work, um, just because the nature of the roof itself. The library roof is really complicated because it's multiple levels and it's also, uh, as you know, it's also under the trees, so it, it takes a beating also, just like the police station does from those tree branches and things like that. But, um, there's also some other issues. When the police station roof was built, there was no requirement for having that be, um, insulated. So that is an extra cost that we weren't anticipating with new building code improvements. Uh, anything that you do, if you tear out any of the roof and you have to lay down new insulation to that roof. So it's not just a replacement like for like, we have to update to current energy codes as well. So yes, uh, as far as I know and everything I've heard, the air conditioning is working at the library right now. Um, it's just the police station, there is, there's nothing right now other than our temporary unit.
Thank you, uh, super helpful. And then in terms of, I guess, plans, if we are gonna reallocate the funds that we currently have allocated to the library roof and HVAC, um, I guess, are there initial thoughts on, on how we would, uh, find that funding to, to move forward with that work?
So one of the things you're gonna see in the '25, '26 budget is an effort to identify projects, save for them and then keep it that way. The other opportunities we have are through grant funding programs with our federal delegation and with our state delegation. We will be focused on those two issues as well.
Super helpful. And then I guess the other question I have is just in terms of the other two recommended allocations. Uh, I think those both sound like very worthy allocations, um, and, you know, I, obviously we had lots of conversations about lots of worthy, uh, allocations here as we went through the process initially and while I don't want to completely reopen that, um, although I don't know what others think, um, I, I do have special interest in having a conversation around, we've had some initial conversation around, um, programming and support for teens in our community and how to give them better options of ways to spend their time. And I think particularly the moment in time that we are in and given that we have some extra funds, I, I would love to, I know you and Jeff were having some conversation about what, um, what options or opportunities might be there from a city perspective and I would love to understand where those are and if there are funding needs that we may want to prioritize over these funding needs. While again, I think, you know, domestic violence services is an incredibly worthwhile investment and would love to see, uh, that, that resurfacing. I have a kiddo that's been taking tennis lessons, uh, through the rec pavilion there and it's been wonderful, but, um, I also think just kind of in terms of bigger picture in the moment in time that we're at, I would love, love to understand if there's, yeah.
Sure, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I'm sorry.
One of the things we're running up against is the need to allocate before the end of 2024.
Sure.
So if we identified funding, we'd have to be under contract before the end of, uh, '24. Um, there are several other items, you know, that, uh, uh, people, uh, councilmembers are interested, uh, in funding, um, and if we can make that happen, we will, but I don't want to give any of this back.
Nor do I. So is this something, I guess, the, the Evergreen Playfield turf and court surface, is that something that was already going to be in our '25, '26 budget, um, to where we are saving those monies and then are gonna have an extra $200,000 next budget cycle to potentially allocate to other projects?
That's one of the things we've been thinking about is the ability to supplant existing funding.
Yeah.
And Jeff, if you could chime in with the, uh, the funding structure for that Evergreen project?
Starts tomorrow.
Yes. Right now for Evergreen Playfields and Tennis Courts, we have nine different funding sources, but as we're getting to 100% design and our final probable cost, it looks like we, uh, are about 33% underfunded. So we're trying to go through all of our funding sources and increase the contribution from impact fees from anything and everything we have to make the project go. Um, if we don't cover the dollar amount, I'm not sure if we will be able to have the project actually get off the ground and construction happen this year. We do have grant resources that we will forfeit if we're not able to do that. I believe there's, uh, 1.3 million in grants that are tied to this pro, this, uh, project itself. Um, we have been able to petition RCO for a cost increase and they've agreed to just last week to, I believe it's like $250,000 extra they're willing to chip in on the project. It's just, we don't know what bids are gonna come in at and we're trying to protect against that, that issue as well. Um, the project itself, the reason why, a big reason, is the cost of fencing. Fencing used to be about $50 a linear foot and it's gone up to about $150 a linear foot. So it is, uh, basically tripled, so.
Jeff, have you thought about chip sealing the courts?
With clay, with clay.
Councilmember Sonmore.
So can I ask, so we really don't, where are we getting the extra? I'm still getting over the 1.4 million. Um, that's really, uh, I, I just, I can't comprehend that, but, so the difference between, sorry if I'm saying this right, so the staff recommends serving those in need, so has that money already been spent then?
No.
Okay.
Uh, it's not what we would do, uh, should council decide to move forward on these recommendations is we would immediately enter into a contract with, uh, Everyone Deserves to be Safe and provide those resources to the domestic violence program.
And then, so the Evergreen Playfield, that's kind of committed because it's tied to the grants and then, and then the last one, sorry, I was reading it wrong at, at first, but, um, there was 800,000, but the PD roof is 1.2. Even if we allocate that difference, where are we gonna get that money?
So we already had some money allocated to the police department roof. Uh, we also had money allocated to the library roof and Mickey Corso clubhouse, um, but because of the need for the police department and we want to complete this all at once. We could, uh, do just the HVAC unit and leave the roof for later, but it doesn't make any sense to me, uh, which is why I've made this recommendation, to not do it all at once because you're looking at mobilization costs, you're looking at potentially higher material costs and labor costs in the future when we are able to do the roof. If we can get one project done and have it completed and have it be good to go for 40 years, I think that is a, uh, a wise use of the resources that we have available, um, recognizing the need at our other facilities, uh, including the library, the clubhouse and, uh, the discussion on the pavilion, which you all will have in a couple of weeks.
And I'm glad you said. And I'm glad you said that because, you know, you can patch something just so long and then it, but we have a representative here from the library too, so I, I wanna ask some other questions. And I understand what you're saying, and it's, it's hard when you have this much money and then inflation happens and fence costs, yeah.
Triple.
That's, what, so what would be the plan then for the library roof of, you, you mentioned it a little bit, but can you kind of go over where we would look for funding? Are we gonna go out for bid? We know those costs are gonna go up. We know we need to do it, but the budget's coming up. Is there gonna be dedicated funds that we're going to put towards that so they, they know that we want to do it? We have to do it, but we've got all these different factors in play. Maybe you could kind of.
Yeah. So what will happen is every segment of capital facilities planning for the city, roads, water, sewer, everything, facilities is one of those segments that we would do a capital improvement plan for that will be part of your budget adoption. One of the things that is in that facility's capital plan is our recommendations for the sequencing of what those projects are. So for instance, library goes first, clubhouse goes second, pavilion goes third, something like that. That's not a formal recommendation, I'm just kind of laying that out. When that occurs, or when council adopts that sequencing plan, the city staff will start to put together the resources needed to make the first project happen, along with a little bit of seed money for the rest of them, just try to get them started. So everybody recognizes they're a priority. We will also go after grant programs for libraries and direct appropriations at the federal and state level, if that's something that's part of the council's agenda, legislative agenda with both the state and the federal, federal government. When we will have the resources, that's not something we can answer only because we don't know how fast they're gonna come in. There's a typical business cycle, you know, revenues rise, revenues fall. We can say that this is our priority, and we are putting money toward that priority every opportunity we have until it's complete, and then the next one moves up the list. And we plan that way. So we think about those things strategically. Sometimes if there's a safety issue, the priority number five might jump to priority number one. But that does not, that's not something we plan for or expect. So we, we identify the plan and then work toward achieving that plan.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you. I know Councilmember Woodard has his hand up. I have a follow-up question for the city manager, though, if that's okay. Just 20 seconds.
Okay.
I guess, I'm not a, I am not familiar, at least with the useful life plan for the library building. I guess we're talking about roof, but I guess trying to think bigger picture in terms of like the age of the library itself and how long we anticipate that to continue to serve the community the way it needs to, I guess. Do we know what that is and is that part of the conversation and consideration?
Yeah. Jeff?
Well, I can tell you, I just looked at the McKinsey report that we did that takes a, a look at useful life and years of service, things like that for each component. And just in the first few years, the next few years, they're recommending $2.6 million investment in the library itself. And that is just some of the major components of need. There's more things on that list, but each building has a similar list. So, yeah, no, I don't know the useful total lifespan. I think that the library needs definitely a new roof and needs some, some work on its heating and air conditioning as well, because those units have aged as well. But I think that the shell's in good shape and, you know, it definitely needs, like building services, it needs, it needs a new fire alarm system. These are different things that we've talked about that are, I think that our technician looked at the system there and said, yeah, needs to be updating. So I think there's some things that we could work on that we are going to put forward in the CIP this year, but as far as the total building, it's, it's a tough call.
Thank you, Jeff. Can you, I know we've seen that McKinsey report, but could we have that resent to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Murray, for the shout out there. So I'm gonna ask the uncomfortable questions, and let me back up and say, I recognize that our CARES Act transition, ARPA funds, conversations drove, were drawn so far out that it's possible that I just don't remember this, but I also pride myself on quirky memories, which is a long way to say before I say this, very big fans of domestic violence services, you know, DVS, all the way up and down the scale, the work they do, the people doing the work, and all the good stuff. That said, I do not ever remember that being on the table, pun intended. So I would just like to hear how that was the one that was singled out, and, and I'll have follow-ups based upon that. And I'm not concerned, I'm happy to sign it off, it's a 10,000, but I would like to know, where did that come from? I feel like I'd remember that again for no other reason than the personal relationships I have with members of the group that might receive the money.
Can I answer that one?
Sure.
They reached out to the city and me saying that they heard that cities, some cities, or I think, I don't know how many cities they went to, saying that there are some extra ARPA funds out there and so forth. They don't need a lot of money. They, they would like to get more, but, you know, they would take whatever they can get. But they asked. There was a need and they asked. They heard from the grapevine and they asked.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Perfect. Oh, wait, I wasn't done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't finish.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilmember.
No, I was, I wasn't sure if the city manager was gonna jump back in, so I was addressing him, but you answered, so that's fine. I, I love that answer, they asked. I, I'll go back in time and say we had quite a few people come and ask, so I would make sure that we address, if that's gonna be our official response, when someone comes back and asks us, well, how did they get up in front of you and on this, gonna again, be as clear as possible? It's not about the content, it's not about the service, not about the people, it's about the process. And I will say that one of my, I, I don't wanna call it a pet project, because it's not a project or a pet, but one of the pieces of those puzzles that I did advocate for during the process unsuccessfully, and I actually just heard come up in this conversation around behavioral health, Mercy House, literally did a presentation for us, stayed involved with us. We did not fund them. We did fund a project that's similar, so I know that we're interested in behavioral health. Again, I just heard us raise it in this conversation. But I would just double back and make sure that as much as I appreciate someone asked lately, let us not forget that we already had some great projects that were lined up that did not get funded, that I don't agree with, because that's, again, I have the right to have an opinion too, I heard that expression earlier today, but I wouldn't like us to reconsider it. Now that said, I, I do wanna be clear and on the public record that when we didn't fund them, I said, well, I will lend you my personal expertise. I am not on a board, but I do serve on an advisory group with them, which is just my way of saying I have learned that much more of what they're doing, seeing it in live action, if you will. And I would strongly encourage us to, as easily as we can say $10,000 isn't that much, to reconsider that 2,000 or 209 and say, well, is there anything else in there that we, again, which was my conversation when we first tried to do this, are there other ways to reposition monies so that we can free this little bit of money up? But again, it's in the right area of behavioral health, everything that we've been talking about. So in that regard, I'm jumping around a little bit, and I'm sorry I'm not there to, you know, map that out schematically, but it's like, I don't know, something's not sitting right, even though I love every piece of the puzzle, right? But it's just like, ah, something's not sitting right there. And I'd hate for us to miss a second opportunity to fund something directly in our neighborhood that's serving all of the needs that we have identified as important to us, maybe not packaged the way we would like it. Meaning that it's Saint Pius, perhaps there's some issues there, but I would still pull back and say, let's look at the end product. At least go down and see what they're doing, right? And again, that's me saying, follow the process for almost two, three solid years, didn't turn it around. I know we've had thousands of great ideas and only about 50 of them made it into their real conversations, but I would hate to think that our real answer is we're giving this other group money because they asked. So a lot of words there, Mercy House, reconsider, finding some funds for them. I do wanna support the 209 so we don't lose the millions in grants, but at the same time, I'm like, yeah, I don't think that's what this money was designed for. It's for, you know, lots of reasons, and I'd hate us to just kind of focus on the city's bills. So now I'm done.
You're done? Okay. Who had their hand up? Did you, okay, you're already paying Donovan?
No, that's all right.
Anyone else? Okay, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the conversation, and I had some, some, some of my own ideas of, you know, this is an opportunity, right? We've got these dollars available still that we need to, need to allocate. I, I think the, both the domestic violence and, and the parks are certainly great, high priorities and deserve to be funded, as well as, at-risk youth, as well as, you know, another thing that we have talked about is, is helping those in need. And part of that challenge is identifying who the at-risk communities are. And here's an opportunity, we have a few dollars available that we can, we can utilize to be able to help us identify those in need. We, we've also have, have a program to help us with engaging the community. So, you know, some of our goal, getting back to our goals and vision for our, for our city is, is, is engaging our community and, and creating an engaged community. So some of the things I'd love to see us do is allocate like $15,000 to help us with, get our community ambassadors program off the ground and be able to help engage our community. As, and, and part of, part of that program is also identifying those in need and then being able to connect them with the services that are available. So I, I'd like to see us allocate, say, $15,000 for, for that aspect. And then another thing we, we've been talking about, we talked about the growth and addressing the growth and the challenges come with growth. Well, a huge part of that is place making, creating a sense of place. I would love to see us allocate another, you know, 10, 15, $25,000 to help us address place making. And part of that is the wayfinding program that we've talked about. Part of that is creating a, a public art fund to be able to help us put, get, get, get art in, you know, into public places, filling blank spaces, I guess, I would call it, filling blank spaces fund. And being able to use that to help us, you know, create murals or mural programs or fund a broader effort to get, you know, a fund that, that allows us to get additional philanthropic, philanthropic dollars, or like Hazel Miller Foundation, get dollars to be able to help us fund public art programs. Anyway, I'd love to be able to get, allocate a set amount of dollars to be able to give to the Art Commission and, and dream big about how we can create public art and, you know, painting the sidewalks or, or parking lots, or just adding color to our community. So those are a couple of the programs. I understand we've got the challenge of obligating funds by the end of the year. I, I, I would love to be able to see us obligate those dollars by the end of the year and get us going on some of those programs, but those are some of the additional areas that I think are important. We've talked about their goals for, for our community and being able to just get us seeding in some programs and getting us off the ground with them.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Okay, this is where the rubber meets the road. This is the hard part of being a council member. These were dollars that we didn't even expect. This is extra money that we got, and we took, we took a big chunk of it to help people in need and, and our community, but we also had to take funding to help our city because a lot of cities like Breyer, well, there's only a few, that didn't take the funding. So we're lucky to have had this money, but this is the hard part because we've got budget coming up, and it's not gonna be easy. A lot of cities are very struggling, extremely hard. And like, we talked about the school district and they're struggling, but this is where it gets very, very tough. And I would love to help Mercy House. I know they came in. I know the church is looking to partner with Elizabeth Ann Seaton because they want, instead of having two offices, the churches, the Catholic churches are combining offices. And this is, this is the really hard part. And mental health, I, I know another big thing we would all love to see, but I do know the state, this is one of the biggest funding that they've ever put towards mental health. So maybe there's a chance, after I, I told them how much I didn't like them tonight, maybe this is where we go and ask for money. But this is the hard part of being on council, and I think we're trying to do the right thing here. And the comments are wonderful and great, and I'd love to capture what you guys were saying on a different plate, but this is where it, it's hard to make decisions like this. And you heard 1.2 million dollars for a roof and HVAC. I mean, I'm in sticker shock still, and so we're trying to do the right thing. We wanna serve our community because our hearts are all in the right place and we love our citizens here, but this is what we have to really truly think about is, we've got a library that we love and we wanna protect and we wanna keep them safe, we wanna keep them sound. We know it needs updating because we love using those facilities, but we have police officers who have a roof that leaks and they, they're hot. And it was miserable a couple of weeks ago, and I was in the house trying to stand in front of a fan. And so it, it's, it's looking at right now, we're looking at the library roof compared to the PD roof and where the funding is and who's worse off. And so I think that's where we're at right now. But please don't think I don't like your comments. I'd like to have space to talk about those more openly and talk about and capture what Steve was saying, as well as Mayor Protem will, and, and, and really put those, and address them sometime. This is just, right now, it is the yucky part of being on council is making decisions like this. So that's where we're at.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. I'd like to ask some clarifying questions, because I'm getting a little, I'm getting a little dizzy here. And, and literally too. But my computer just died, so I can't go back to that. I have to go up my written notes. So we're saying that we have allocated 100,000, $800,000 for either the police building or the library building.
So the, yeah, the discussion that council had in 2023 where we allocated the second half of the ARPA dollars, at that time, council dedicated $800,000 to the library roof, which we thought, before we got this, this bid, would be enough or at least close to repairing the library roof along with the HVAC system. We already had dollars allocated for the PD roof that were non-ARPA, and they were from REIT funds and various other funds that we had. When we got this bid for the police department, 1.432 million, after shock, we looked at our options, like I said, to finish one project. We didn't wanna have to do a piecemeal, and we wanted to get that done and over with so we could rely on that roof for the next 40 years.
So then, with that, are we on these other things with the everybody deserves to be safe and things like that? Are we saying we're gonna go through with that, or are we gonna cancel that so we could put more money towards the library and the?
No, two separate things. So the only, the reallocation is the 800,000 that council allocated for the library. We're asking you to move that to the PD roof construction project. The second part is the leftover funds from various other projects that council funded that weren't as expensive as we thought they would be. For example, the, the, the body cams. So that money comes back, it's not dedicated to any particular project, and we want to make sure we can dedicate those dollars before the end of '24, when we would have to give it back to the federal government.
All right. So then, where are we with, still getting back to the roofs? We gonna, if we wanna use that money? Were we gonna use it, you think?
So, yeah, at this point.
The 800, I mean, we got two roofs, right?
Right.
Are we gonna flip a coin?
Yeah. Well, at this point, because. Yeah. Well, at this point, uh, because the library roof is larger than the police department roof. And it's more complicated. Jeff talked a little bit about multi-level, uh, that kind of thing. Uh, we think, uh, based on the quote that we got for the police department roof, that the library roof will probably be significantly more expensive than that.
Yeah.
So even with the eight hundred thousand dollars, we wouldn't be able to do much of anything for the library, unfortunately.
So what are we going to do with that money? Just the police department? But we don't, that needs what, one point four million?
Mm-hmm. And we already have, uh, we have that covered. Uh, if we have the eight hundred thousand dollars for the police department, plus what we had previously allocated, we can finish it.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I was just needed some clarification there. Thank you.
Councilmember Murray? Thank you, Mary. I think everybody's talked. Um, I so appreciate the conversation and appreciate, um, you know, I think the, the different thoughts and ideas and I guess an idea that I'd like to put out there. Um, I think particularly hearing Councilmember Woodard's, uh, feedback about the fact and, and understanding a little bit more about how we ended up with the requests in front of us. Uh, one of the groups that came and, and spoke to us was the Access Project. Um, and so they were the group, um, Wally Webster, I think, was here. And so it's kind of a group of, you know, local leaders who are looking to address escalating felony violence and self-harm in South County youth. Uh, they're a nonprofit organization. I know in the aftermath of the shooting at Alderwood Mall, the Linwood City Council used some of their unobligated funds to make an additional, um, investment in the Access Project, which is something that could move forward right away. And so I guess I would love to, I'd love to have a conversation about whether that feels like maybe it meets the, you know, kind of need of an organization that has come before us and asked for funds. Dealing with violence, dealing with behavioral health, dealing with the need to allocate funds before the end of the year, um, gives us the opportunities at council to do something tangible, uh, in response to, to that act of violence against a member of our community. Um, I, I would love to see maybe that first one serving those in need, uh, be allocated to the Access Project instead.
Understand, uh, all of the, the good ideas, um, that have been shared tonight. Um, I think it's important, um, for me to borrow a phrase, how can I phrase this elegantly? Uh, to keep in mind, yeah.
Crushing dreams? I think that's what we talked about, Jeff.
Every, all, all the, all the staff tells me I'm great at that, so I'll practice on you. Um, I, I think it's important to keep in mind that we have to have this done by the end of twenty-four and there is, uh, staff capacity issues. So something will have to drop if, uh, something that we're currently doing will have to drop if we're going to explore all these different options.
If we are just all in alignment and ask you to write a check, is that a, a challenge on staff capacity?
It is because, uh, we have to do contracts, we have to do legal review, we have to bring those contracts back to council, we have to, uh, analyze all the memos, make sure we know the ins and outs of what's happening. So we can do it. Uh, but there are some things that are going to have to slide to the side or take a, a step down on the priority run. Um, we are, as you heard tonight, in the middle of conference planning. We are in the middle of, uh, biannual budget development. We're also in the middle of recruitment for two department heads. Um, and those are just the top line things that we are, we are working with. Not to say we won't. If council wants us to do this, we will make the effort to do it. But, um, I think it's important for me to tell you that there are, there are only so many hours in a day.
Understood. And I promise, that's why I'm keeping all of, so many things that I'd like to do inside until we get through some of these things. Um, but I guess so, maybe help me understand because I don't know that I fully understand. So everyone deserves to be safe. Is that an organization we have an existing, uh, relationship with already? I guess I don't have enough context to understand why this organization, other than what we've heard tonight that they asked.
So one of the things was, uh, one that they asked, but two, uh, in all of the, uh, dollars that the council, um, all of the dollars in areas that the council allocated money to, especially in the social services field, one of the ones that we did not touch on was domestic violence. We heard about, um, you know, we have, we have allocated ARPA dollars to, uh, mental health services and to social services and, uh, those types of things. One of the needs, and we heard this at the Terrace Talk event, uh, about, uh, the domestic violence coordinator that we have and that it's not what I think typically comes to mind for most people. Um, where it could be, you know, family members living together. That still qualifies as domestic violence and so on. So, uh, one of the areas that we have not allocated dollars to yet has been domestic violence, where these other areas, uh, we have. Not that they're not very worthy causes, it's just trying to make the most impact in various areas of our community that we can with the limited dollars we have.
Okay, I'm going to be a little tough here, Jeff. So is it the capacity or is it the need to cover all of the areas that we want to make impact based on our goals?
I think it's both.
Okay. Do we, I guess, what, what does everyone deserves to be safe do? I guess, I mean, that's like, I don't, we don't have context.
Yeah, they provide shelter services.
Shelter services. Okay. So they would be somebody that we would be potentially referring members of our community to if they were in a domestic violence situation and needed support? Okay, I feel like maybe Councilmember Payne Donovan wants?
This is a, a secure DV shelter that is run by, uh, the county, uh, CUC, yeah.
And our coordinator absolutely does refer folks there from our community.
That's helpful context. Thank you.
Yeah, the, this is the name of the facility, secure facility. Um, yeah.
Councilmember Salmur?
We're going down this road. I completely support domestic violence. Um, our services in Mount Lake Terrace are beyond compare. Some cities don't even have, um, domestic violence and you wouldn't believe, um, the service that is brought here. And you should be reading our police reports because, um, I am appalled at how many domestic violence cases that we have in our own city. And, um, but I want to go back because we've already talked about these fundings. And so I don't know if we're really in a place where we can reallocate. Um, domestic violence is one that we, we do need to support, especially if we have those services here and we overflow. But I, I, I want to acknowledge what you're saying because you have passion behind, you know, what you want to support. And so I get that. But I want to go back because we do have a representative from the library here and we used to call some of this budget dust, right? Because it's just a little portion. Even if we were to take the ten thousand and the two oh nine and put them together towards the library, it would be such a small amount. And we're looking at two point six for the roof and all the repairs for the library. And I'm still wondering where we're going to get that. And so we're kind of obligated to that because, um, that's one of our facilities. And so I think, you know, you've talked about it quite a bit, about the sequence of the projects, the resources, the grant programs, state and federal. And I'm assuming that you're already talking to Jake and, and, um, different things. So that's something, and the safety issues you brought up. But that's one of the things that I think is on our plate today is how are we going to find money for the roof, for the library? And, um, I'm sure we're going to be in sticker shock when we see the budget because budgets are always tight. Um, and, and we're all doing the right thing. We all want to support something, right? But this is one of those things that's an obligation to find money for the roof. And I don't remember how long we've had this on the docket to repair. So it's kind of where we're having to save for that roof budget. And I'm, I think you said the two point six did include maybe the roof?
Yeah, two point six was the number Jeff Betts gave for, uh, the initial assessment that McKinstry did for us for what was going to be needed. That included, uh, the roof HVAC, a new fire alarm system, I believe he said, uh, and a few other things. Um, but that, uh, again, is just an estimate until the bids come in.
But there are, um, grants and other things out there that we can go after?
Absolutely. Um, there are dollars that we can go after for those types of facilities for the clubhouse, which is in much the same situation, um, that, uh, grants that are available. You know, whether we get those grants, not guaranteed, of course, but we'll, we'll certainly do our best.
Well, I know.
All I heard was no.
Councilmember Woodard's.
Oh, Councilmember Woodard?
Thanks again for the save. Yeah, that's me. I was trying to, too many buttons. Uh, yes. So yes, I was trying to speak up. Uh, first, I just wanted to back up and say thank you to city manager. I, I really was not going to be able to leave this meeting with, because they asked. So I appreciate, uh, the additional context that that was one of the areas we did not touch, domestic violence. I'm glad that that's on the record in this meeting. I do thank people who watch these and these are very important conversations. And I hope that it gets people inspired to lean in, right? And ask questions of their own. You, you don't have a microphone, do you? Well, just putting that out there for you to think about. Uh, that said, uh, you know, I do not want to take anything that's off the list that we've been talking about. So as much as I appreciate hearing the Access Project's name come in there, I actually want to make sure you heard me, which is I don't think we should just say the two hundred and nine is untouched. I mean, I get it, but in the spirit of that new metaphor you just gave me, budget dust, I feel like you're telling me we can't shave some of that off to support something else and support the DVS. Again, I'm in all of these pots. So there's a single thing we've talked about that does not have Steve Woodard's hand on it. I'm going to be straight up with you. So either way, whatever we decide, I'm probably going to have to recuse myself, it feels like. And we'll check that with our lawyers. Uh, but at the end of the day, I'm still looking at this going to the point that this was not money we expected to have. I don't want us to just pay city bills in this reallocation, which is what it feels like when we say we're going to reallocate eight hundred back to the police department and we're going to take two hundred and nine of the overestimation and put that towards, uh, another city property. But we'll put ten thousand back into something that, and this is going to sound weird to say it this way, that a very small percentage of our residents may need, heaven forbid they don't, right? So I just go, I feel like we should pull back and go, we've identified, again, behavioral health is touching everybody, right? And we, again, funded a program that is not up and running. Uh, I, just over there, there are actually machines over there, so it is going to happen. And I hope they ask for the money. That's a whole other conversation. Uh, but nonetheless, I just kind of recognizing that we genuinely have in our city an opportunity. And I would just, you know, encourage you all, go up and see for yourself, even if we don't do anything right now. This might just be a plant to seed to say, don't forget about that group out there. They're, it's really amazing. And that's coming from a unitarian universalist. I'd be very clear that our religious backgrounds would not mesh. And I'm seeing bigger than, this is bigger than them being Saint Pius. This is a resource in this community that when the folks are coming, they're not asking to be saved. They're asking to be helped, right? So again, just kind of putting that back out there. I, I am a Parks and Rec guy. Remember, I come off of ARPA, pretty sure I would still embody literally everything that's about the parks, to the point that some of us even put ourselves in harm's way at National Night Out. Uh, so it's not about Steve doesn't support the parks. It's a, let's look at this and recognize this wasn't money we expected. Let's do something unexpected.
Councilmember Salmur?
So can I ask, just to make this, um, if we removed all this money, we've already kind of used this in our budget, right? We've already looked at our budget and, and kind of allocated this money in our budget. So I understand the need of wanting to help the community. I, I do. But when you see that budget, you're going to ask, where am I going to get all this money to pay for the PD roof and the tennis court? Doesn't that project start tomorrow? I mean, the one we were just talking about, moving off a national night out. So isn't that project already funded with grants? I, I know Jeff was talking about it earlier. So it's already going to be done here in a minute. So, uh, in a minute, but soon. Oh.
So, uh, the one, uh, ongoing that started, um, a couple of days ago and, uh, is going to continue, uh, for a couple of days forward is retrofitting the lighting. Yeah. So, uh, this project that we're talking about for, um, Evergreen Playfield Three is, uh, new turf, uh, putting in turf and resourcing the tennis court, among other things, including a lot of fencing, unfortunately, which is Jeff mentioned, oop, sorry, tripled in cost.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate all the conversation and additional information and helpful for me as I'm thinking about things and kind of looking ahead to, to what we have on our agenda next meeting. Um, I'm comfortable supporting the, the proposals as laid out for a number of reasons that we, we've already, um, reviewed. I mean, I think with that though, when we have those budget conversations, I mean, my expectation is particularly, uh, when we have conversations about investment in youth, that is something that I, I would like to better understand what that looks like moving forward and would expect city staff to be ready to talk to us a little bit about what that would require from us to be able to do that. Um, and want to understand, I mean, all of our, all of our aging buildings, uh, but particularly because we had already decided and, you know, made the, made the decision to move forward and, uh, replace the library roof and HVAC, um, what our options are there. And that's something that obviously needs to be looked at sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Anyone else? We thought this was going to be a short meeting. Oh, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you. Real quick, uh, just so I think I heard it and I, again, still kind of learning process, five years in. I want to echo the idea that, well, then perhaps on our legislative agenda, uh, in Olympia, we would have the library on that. Uh, I do want to be clear, as I've said in my one-on-one with, uh, city manager this morning, I do support the move and you'll see that in my vote. Uh, it's an unfortunate situation, but again, I, to the point, bills keep coming, keep rising. We got to keep doing what we can, uh, and try to be as reasonable in those processes. Uh, but I would similarly, as I said to, um, the Mercy House situation, figure out a way to help, which is, I would at least say, well, in this case, then I would say we should commit to making sure that this is part of our legislative agenda, uh, specifically this year.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out.
All we're asking for tonight is if council's comfortable with this, so you move it to consent for your next meeting. If you'd like to see any changes, you know. Yeah, you can pull anything off consent at any time.
So is everyone comfortable with this going on, the consent agenda? One, two?
I would say, I, I'm not going to wait for his man. I don't know that comfortable is the right word, but I don't hear Steve Woodard having anybody standing behind him. So I'm not going to slow the process down to keep talking about something, right? So it's like, I said, what I had to say is on the public record, right? There's no right answer. There's no wrong answer because it's, you know, going to adjust in a week's time. Uh, but that stated, you know, I'm a little disappointed, but I can live with it.
All right. So do I have, I have enough thumbs up for it to go on the consent agenda? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to really work hard on those, on, on the library. Really, really, really will, I know I will promise. Okay. So next is the review of the, oh, public comments. Now that we've.
Ruth Allen is the first one to speak, if you're ready. You'll have five minutes.
Um, yes, I'm Ruth Allen.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Ruth Allen. I live on Lakeview Drive in Mount Lake Terrace and I've been here before. And, um, I love the library and I am very upset after all these years that the work is not being done again for the library. I've worked with the wonderful staff there, um, as a volunteer and I have seen behind the scenes of that building and it's disgusting. It is falling apart. It's crumbling. I would not want my home to look like that. And then you have children's groups that come in, the wonderful story hours and all the people that come in, yes, as a cooling center. And I'm just really upset that it's being pushed off again. Obviously, the police department takes priority, but I would think you could also get funding, as we're all aware of the police and how they're in the news. I would think you could get more funding for them also. So I appreciate that you make this a priority because it's been going on for a long time. And, you know, maybe the roof will fall in before. And, you know, maybe the roof will fall in before something happens, and then what? So we don't want to lose the library. It's important to a lot of people, not just people that live in Mount Lake Terrace. And Waste Management, I live in a condo and we've been fined $115 every month because we have garbage in our recycling. And it's like, they take a photo while we've never seen the photo. So I was at the library copying page after page of material from Waste Management to hand out to each individual unit saying, please do better. And now we're being fined by Waste Management for overfilling our garbage dumpster. And everybody's like, no, we're not, but now we're going to have to pay more. So, you know, it's nice to hear that other people are seeing this and, you know, $115, I mean, we pay over $1,000 a month for our Waste Management. So we're trying very hard, but Waste Management, I had to print and copy all that material from them because we get nothing from Waste Management. I know there's usually a pamphlet that's handed out to houses about what goes where, we get nothing. So we have to do it all on our own, we have to do it over and over and over. So at this point, my thing was like, let's just make it all garbage so then we don't get fined because they're making it garbage themselves. And if they see a dumpster contaminated, I'm sure they just throw it all away. They don't sort through anything and people bag the recyclings. They just throw, they pull it out and throw it away. So we're trying to educate our people, but Waste Management is not doing a good job reaching out to anybody to help them do a better job. So, thank you for bringing that up and it's interesting to see that it's a big topic, a conversation now because they just seem to be able to do what they want. And who knows, we don't even know if it's being recycled, it could be all going to garbage anyway. But anyway, thank you very much.
Next is Lee Gresko. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you all for all the hard work you do. I can see it's pretty complicated, especially when it comes to money. And I'm thinking about bids, is, I'm assuming you get more than one bid. ARP always recommends if you're going to have a roof done, get three bids. Okay. So I support the library as well and it is a public good. It, it needs to have, as Aaron pointed out, air conditioning if we're going to continue having the heat waves that we do and people need a place to go. And, and there's a lot of homeless people that hang out there on a daily basis. So, and, and the leaking roofs and all that, I've been hearing other people talk about that. And that probably means mold and that probably means people have to live in a building where there's mold in the air, not live there. Well, pretty much when you work someplace all the time, you kind of live there, you're there more than your home. So it, it seems like a health priority in that sense, so keep that in mind, please. And the other thought I was having when we were talking about housing, we weren't, we were listening, about affordable housing and that kept coming up. And I'm thinking, what, what is affordable? I, I don't know what that even means. And I, I work with an organization called Northwest Neighbors Network and I'm on that board and volunteer with them. And we see mostly seniors and we see seniors getting priced out of their apartments all the time. So for them, affordable is a whole different thing. And that, that's all they have and they have nowhere else to go. So we need to keep thinking about having not just affordable housing, whatever the heck that means, but to have low-income housing because the majority of these, of us, what am I saying, of us aging people, it's pretty set, it's not going to increase and, and costs are going to continue to increase. So we have a lot of elders that are going to need housing. They're scared, they're, they're really scared about where they're going to go when their landlord raises their rent one more time. They have to give up something else, just like you're talking about, you have to give up something if we're going to fund these wonderful projects. So I would like to hear more explanation on what affordable means and how we can start looking a little bit more closely at our aging population instead of just looking, 20 years from now, we won't be here. And a lot of people will and we don't know what they will consider to be affordable. So it's, it's going to be a whole different bag of worms. And, and maybe some of you will be here and maybe you won't. But anyway, I think cost of living is, is really a difficult thing right now for a lot of folks, so, and, and if we don't have that grocery store, they can't get any food either. So thank you for all you do and thank you for listening.
So no one registered to comment online and any written public comments received were distributed to council members?
Okay. All right, so we, next on the agenda is the review of the August 15th meeting. Has everyone looked at that? And then, next is council comments. Does anyone, we've talked, city manager?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of questions that were posed earlier and made sure we get the right information out there. So for, whoops, wrong one. For food, the only food that we had to buy for National Night Out was the popcorn kernels and Rent the Machine pops popcorn. So Safeway donated all of the chips, all of the hot dog buns and all of the drinks and Double D Meats donated all of the hot dogs. So it wasn't that cost, it was a full donation, I wanted to make sure that they got credit for that. So thanks for giving me the chance to, to clarify that.
Thank you. Anyone else? We just want to be out of here before nine. Oh, oh my God. All right, we are adjourned.
Good night.